I call the regular meeting back to order. I can report that no action was taken and instructions were given to the real property negotiator. And we have our mayor stepping in. At this point, I'll pass the chair to Mayor Bryce.
Well, I'll give you the attorney this.
So we close closed session and I think we're on the after that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Sasha.
So, we have our report. We now have flags for the presentation.
The flag is unified from the United States of America. And we are one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now we have item A, approval of the agenda for November 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for November 2nd, 2017.
Second half.
All right. All favor?
Aye.
Item 9, approval of minutes from October 19th?
You want me to make a motion that we approve the minutes from October 19th, 2017?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Objection? Item 10, committee reports. Development and Tourism.
Still haven't had a meeting. We'll get around that later in November, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Finance has not been since our last meeting. New Orleans Public Facilities and Services. The Airport Committee.
Mark, what do you want me to do? So we had our last meeting and the big focus of the last meeting was on making sure that we were exploring all the options we could to bring the airport to being self-sufficient. We went over budget information and projected out costs and mid-revenues and were exploring various options primarily focused on what we could do as far as the property east of the airport. Right now, we're making sure verifying as closely as we can that that property when it was given to the city in 1964 belongs to the cap, to the city, and that it does not have any unusual restrictions on it from the FAA. So hopefully, we can find a way to make that a revenue source, and that's what we're exploring right now. We have just finished up one of the two grants. The pavement management plan is at the final stages and we'll be closing out that grant. And then we're still about midway through the process with the airport layout plan that's being done by Cox and Associates. And so that's all we're doing right now.
Will the airport layout plan will come to the council for approval, assuming that's completed?
It'll definitely come to the council. It'd be a good idea to get the council to adopt, yes.
And will Carol Ford come and present that to us?
Oh, probably. Go ahead. The consultant would be the one that most likely would be the one to present. Because he, he'll answer the question. Cox and Associates. Jim Harris would be the person probably, he's the lead person for that project.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. Emergency Plan Task Force, Monday and Thursday. Veterans Memorial?
There's nothing to report.
Well, I'd like to, I could say, what we have right now is there's been some asking about what we were going to do with the Veterans Day. And we hadn't planned anything. I checked with one of the vets that's familiar with what's going on around the county. And for Veterans Day, the only two real celebrations that they have are a detme for an actual parade and at the memorial garden outside of weed. So with that in mind, the cell of Tom Jackson suggested that most people focus on Memorial Day, and that's what we had done last year. So I'm anticipating that unless we can come up with something magical between now and next week, that we'll wait and have our next sort of ceremony taking place for Memorial Day. The other thing is that we do need to sometime between now and then talk about that, but we won't do that at the beginning of the year. Would you agree to that, David?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Okay. Item G, Mossbury Trail is, the proposal for the trail is on our agenda tonight. It's the last item on our agenda, but hopefully, we won't take too much time to put it, so you all get to hear about it. But I don't delay right now. But we're excited to present a proposal to the city council tonight, along with a resolution concerning one piece of it. But that'll come on our agenda. The Broadbent Committee, the committee hasn't really met since our last meeting. No updates there. Beautification, Tim?
Yeah.
Tim Holt is our chairman of our beautification debate.
Brief update on that. We have decided to suspend the future meetings until March because there's not a whole lot of outdoor work that can be done, I think, between now and then. But we, at our meeting, we discussed three more possible bench locations, and then again, that would be for next spring. Post office, possibly the children's park, and a location down on Sacramento Avenue. And as you may know, Reverend Bob Awood has a whole list of things that he'd like to get done at Centennial Plaza in the future. I won't go into that now. There was a notice in this yesterday's paper. Some of you council members don't read the Dunsmere News, I have to respect. This is for those of you who do or don't. We did put an official announcement in the paper that we're accepting donations for the beautification committee. There is a form, a very simple form at the front desk, which can be filled out. Anybody who wants to write a check, they can specify which project, benches, Centennial Plaza, flowers, that they would like to donate for. So, and somebody asked me, maybe one of you can answer this. Is that tax deductible? Does anybody know of these checks? I don't know.
Donation to the city? I don't.
Yeah, I would happily talk to the tax advisor, but we're not a nonprofit. I would question it.
I would too. Yeah. Question, okay. I do have one more question, and that's about it. It did come up at our meeting. If you recall, the $150 that it's going to cost, I think, for paint for the town clock? Somebody maintained that that was going to come out of beautification committee funds, and my impression is that was not the case. Does anybody have an answer for that?
Well, I would just say that the beautification committee doesn't have its own funds that are donated as part of this program that are specifically outlined, so I don't think so, but.
Mr. Mayor? As we had said the last time, that what we're going to do as far as the paint was to pay for it and have a negative in the account that we set up in our general fund. And it's for you. So any money that comes in will go into that account in our general fund. And what we said was that we were going to pay for the paint upfront, but that would be reimbursed once the funds get to the point where we can reimburse. Does that make sense?
Just to clarify what you just said, you're saying that the $150, when it's spent for paint, is going to be a deficit on the beautification committee? Okay, I didn't get that when you had this here. Is that your, that seems to be?
Yeah.
But someone would have to make the donation to that fund specifically for the paint, because if they allow it for their other purposes.
That wasn't specified.
That wasn't specified, yeah.
That wasn't, yeah, well.
Well, so, okay, that was my misunderstanding. I didn't realize that was coming out of our funds.
Well, the point was is that we were looking at, well, I was the chair at the point. And the point was is that we were looking, and we had the motion of the past and everything else, but we were looking at the idea that $150 going out of the general fund, as tight as it is right now, was a hit. And so the whole idea was is that we foresaw the idea that you would have a fund and there would be monies coming in. So we're saying, we're looking at it now, but we're looking at, once you get to where we fall, sometime down the line, we'll get it back.
Okay. I'm glad we clarified that. I want to make one more point then, because down the road, if something comes up, some beautification, well, some project to improve the appearance of downtown, I'm a little concerned that automatically, even though it's something we haven't necessarily promoted, that it would come out of beautification committee funds. It seems like some of those projects ought to come out of just general funds, too. Does that, does that make sense to you guys, or?
It makes sense to me. I mean, if we set up the fund as a separate fund, certainly in the future, I would like to see the beautification committee be consulted before funds are taken out of their behalf.
An example, okay. So you plant some new trees, you know, downtown, which would be considered beautification, but that's not necessarily the point of our committee project. Are we going to be financially responsible for that?
No. We're saying this was fraudulent as part of a beautification for downtown. And from that, it seemed logical that beautification funds would be, that's all it was. I don't think, and I agree with Mayor Craig. In the future, this was an unusual situation in the future. You wouldn't expend any money out of your account, your account, et cetera.
I think the idea was that we would just seek donations for this expenditure, but we didn't want to delay it.
No, I understand.
So seek donations for it to the place that it was, to seek donations through that same beautification process.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And thank you guys for clarifying my question. Moving on, Item J, our Marijuana Task Force. We canceled our meeting on Tuesday earlier this week.
Wednesday.
I'm sorry, Wednesday, yesterday. And moved it to, when, Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, which is November 7th, at 6:30, at 6:30 PM. So our next meeting of the task force is right here in this room, next Tuesday, at 6:30 PM. And we'll be considering an ordinance that we've been reviewing for weeks and weeks and are making specific changes that the committee and the community have suggested over the last several weeks. And hopefully, be sort of presenting that to the committee, if we're able to pass on to the council at a future meeting. So it's an important meeting. If you could be there next Tuesday at 6:30. Okay. Moving on to Item 11, this is announcements and public comments. This is the time for anybody in the audience to come and make their comments at the podium for any items that are not on our agenda tonight.
Karen from the library asked me to let you know that gambling is back in Dunsmere. The Lions Club, the Eagles are going to start bingo. So gambling is bad.
I hope we're allowed to say that that's, I can be honest, good about those.
Good, she didn't give her name. That was anonymous.
Any other announcements or public comments at this time? Okay. We'll close the podium for public comment then, and move on to Item 12, announcements and reports from council and staff. It's okay, we'll begin with Mark.
The announcements just two. I just want to report that I went to a scorecard meeting last week. Very informative. We're in the meeting all day long, going over liability, risk and liability. And they just sent out a PDF of an overview of the programs that they have. I'll throw that to all the council members, and it's a really good read, if you're looking for anything. So look at it out, it was a really good meeting, long, but it was very informative. Meeting new, I got to learn a lot. Also, I was looking, I have some time today, looking to put together the mission vision goal, start it formally, what to do there. And I'm looking at dates, looking at probably a little later than expected, but November 21st to 29th as a goal to try to set for a town hall meeting. So I'll send out an email to see if any of those dates are good for the city council. And of course, we're engaged in, to see if I can get some suspicion.
Question, is that enough time? Do we have to give the word out to get a good attendance? If we're going to do it within the same month?
If not, then we'll.
Okay, just be concerned about that. I can maximize.
I also have some questions. There's a church also about the school foundation, so I was nice enough to include them. If we bring them in, we can push it back, because they really put a lot into it.
All right. I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you.
I'm just stunned and amazed and say I have no number.
All right.
I got a little something, two things. One, one of our own, Reverend Bob, today he was out there on the curb hitchhiking in the rain in a robe, and I pulled over, and he needed a ride to the chiropractor up here in town. For those of us that know the guy, pretty nice guy, he got jumped in, got involved with the community both feet. I think that we should do a reach out, see if he needs rides. He's got to go to that chiropractor all the time, I'm under an impression. So maybe in our little circles, we can do a reach out and help him a little bit more. And the second thing is, I heard something. We had the opportunity, city manager Bruce and myself had the opportunity to have breakfast with Senator Ted Gaines. And I had the opportunity to thank Fire Department, CAL FIRE, for their responses in everything that was put out the state of California, but especially in our own backyard. Where I lived, my house, I can watch TV. You know, open up the back door and look out and watch the dump water, put on a fire. It was pretty amazing, so I gave him the props. Something at that meeting I heard that, I plan on joking on the bandwagon, wholeheartedly and support this initiative that's going to be coming out. For volunteers, we don't have volunteers like we used to have. Nowadays, they're all stuck on their little iPhones or whatever. And so there's a guy that's bringing something to the Senate, a tax incentive for volunteers. So I think that's a good, good thing. I hope that the city, when it comes up, the city would support something like that. So I want to be the first to bring that out. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Dave. Josh?
We're getting conflict as a volunteer to work.
I may call it something else. Thank you. All right. I don't have anything either, so this time we'll move on to Item 13A. This is an introduction of College of Siskiyou President, Dr., is it Schoonmaker?
Schoonmaker.
Schoonmaker. Schoonmaker.
Welcome to Dunsmere, sir.
Thank you. So, good evening. My name is Dr. Stephen Schoonmaker. I'm the new superintendent president of College of Siskiyou. College of Siskiyou is celebrating its 60th year of being here in the community, serving the community, the students that we educate and prepare for workforce. And I've not been here long. I just got here July 1st. But already, I really feel like Siskiyou County is home. Just a little bit about me, 50 years ago, I had my first visit to Siskiyou County. My father, who was Chair of the Mathematics Department at the University of Vermont, took a sabbatical leave to UC Berkeley in the quiet years of 1967, '68. And so, but we, we were from Vermont, and so we spent a lot of time up here. And it's taken me 50 years to land here, but I've been circling around it, first at UC Davis, and then at Southwestern Oregon Community College in Coos Bay, and then I was up in Astoria for a time. Was president of a college in Arkansas. When you get your first presidency of a college, you go where they call you, so I got to go to Arkansas. Usually, if you get a second presidency, hopefully, you get a chance to do more selecting, and so I selected Siskiyou County. So I'm very thrilled to be here. One of the things I'm doing in my first year is having what we're calling a listening tour of various communities throughout Siskiyou County. Have held one so far indoors, Happy Camp. Next, not next week, in two weeks, I'll be in Thule Lake. And I'm looking forward to scheduling a time to come here to Dunsmere area and do something probably very similar to the idea you have of your town hall. So I don't think we can coordinate those, because I don't want to rain on your parade. So, but somehow, maybe in the next four or five months, we could have a couple of events, one for yours, which sounds very important. And it would be very important for me to hear from the community, what are things that the college could be doing to help the community? And we have community in our name of being a community college, and we take that idea seriously. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say hello. Very, very pleased and thrilled to be here. I've gotten to meet a few of you in our comings and goings around the county and serving the county. And it's indeed a pleasure to be able to call this place home. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to Item B, which is a proclamation from Read Across Siskiyou by First Five. Is there a presentation ready? All right.
I put all the excitement's kind of out.
We brought this for you, too. My name's Steve Bryan. I'm community outreach advocate for First Five Siskiyou. And most of you know Alex. She's the director here at Dunsmere Family Resource Center. She's also the interim director for Mount Shasta Resource Center. And First Five Siskiyou and the resource centers in Siskiyou County work together closely in supporting First Five, mainly children zero to five, but family resource centers all the way up through senior care. So there's a lot of great things going on at the local family resource centers. But this is our 10th annual Read Across Siskiyou event coming up next week on November 8th. And we have literally probably 100 different events lined up at all the different schools, preschools, kindergartens, community leaders, other advocates for children will be reading to the children. All the children under five will be getting Peaky Cat books. And I brought folders with some information in there. But they're actually getting two different books. This is one of them. The other one's about buttons, Peaky Cat and Missing Buttons. So all kids, we've given out over 4,000 books for children in Siskiyou County. The promote reading in your folder, too, you'll see there's information about, there's some great programs going on at the Dolly Parton Imaginarium Library. It's free books throughout the year. One book a month for 12 months for all kids. And counting five of them, it's free to anybody that wants to enroll. We've been busy signing up. We got close to 1,000 children already signed up for it. It's another great reading program we're doing. And then the hats that some of you already have on, those are for November 8th, and we encourage you to wear them throughout the day on November 8th, because when children are coming out from the preschools and the kindergartens, they're going to, they've already been read the books, and they're already going to know about Peaky Cats. So when they come out throughout the day, and they're going through town, whether it's at the post office or the grocery store, or wherever you are, and they see you with a hat on that's going to bring a smile to their face, and it's going to resonate the whole reading with them and their parents, and hopefully, we can keep that going.
And the resource center will have the extra cat hats, which we will be distributing into the downtown area. And I got from that, sorry, sorry for interjecting, but also we should say thank Dan Tyler, because he's actually one of our leaders. So that's going to be really exciting to have him again, and he's very dedicated and advocate, like many of you are, for the resource center. And we are very excited to again present this in our community.
It's an honor to do it, you guys, I got to tell you. I hope, if you guys don't go down and volunteer, you don't know what you're missing. You get the little ones like this.
Can you show us some of how to do that?
To be a reader?
Yeah, to be a reader.
You could call at First Five Siskiyou offices. We've been scheduling readers throughout the county. If we can't get you in now, we can include you in the next event, for sure. But yeah, definitely call First Five Siskiyou. If you look in your folder, there's information regarding the library, everybody. And then it's also more information just on First Five Siskiyou and what we've done for the children in the community throughout the year.
And then I usually recruit as well, so I'll call up some folks. So if there's anybody else that would like to volunteer, I usually try to, this year, because there are two books, trying to have two readers. So if anybody is interested here, share stuff, root for one more? Awesome. We'll be at the library. Thank you, Bruce.
Any question? I just wanted to actually point out that, and support the idea of the imaginary, because I know that the Rotary Club has been supporting the project for the last six months, and the idea of having students grow up with knowing that every month there's going to be a book coming through, the excitement, I think, is tremendous. So I would highly encourage anybody who is unaware of that, look into it and maybe stop down at the resource center and see if they're contributing. It's a really good cause.
Yes. All the resource centers have information on it, and they're also looking for donors too, to help out with the program.
You guys have a knack of picking good books that you have this right here.
Exactly. I was just about to point you out.
That's what it's all about.
This is exactly what it's all about, our literacy efforts to get interested in reading what we have in the future. And later on, they'll start telling stories, and they're just, they're so creative. It's just been amazing, an opportunity to have that.
And also, in regards to the Read Across Siskiyou, we had a proclamation. Did you want me to read that, or?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Proclamation states, for the city of Dunsmere, proclamation of the 10th Annual Read Across Siskiyou Event. It's sponsored by First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission. And whereas the ultimate goal of the First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission is that all of Siskiyou's children from prenatal to five years of age will be healthy, ready to learn, and supported and safe, nurturing families and communities. And as whereas children in Dunsmere from prenatal to five years of age have successful start in life through daily reading with supportive and nurturing families, care groups, educators, and community leaders. And whereas early literacy is the foundation for academic, social, emotional, and economic success. And whereas First Five Siskiyou's partnership with family, community, resource centers dedicates one day each year to promote early literacy through Read Across Siskiyou by providing the same titled book read by guest readers to children of various preschool, kindergarten, childcare settings, and libraries throughout Siskiyou County on the same day, and provide each child with a copy of that book to take home. And therefore, the city of Dunsmere hereby proclaims November 8th, 2017, as the 10th anniversary of Read Across Siskiyou. And be it that the body enthusiastically endorses daily reading, seeing, and playing with children as a critical foundation for healthy development and lifelong success.
It needs to be an amen.
Thank you. And First Five Siskiyou and the family resource centers, we really thank Dunsmere Council for getting this on the agenda and recognizing this importance, and being a reader and supporting the community. And one last thing I'd like to say is, coming up at the end of the month is Giving Tuesday, and please keep in mind your family resource centers when it comes to Giving Tuesday. They do do a lot. There are one stop, stop for anybody who needs a friend or just wants to come and use the facilities. It's open to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commence you, sir. Thank you.
Should we?
Thanks for the cup, too.
Yeah, go formally. Move to adopt the proclamation.
I make a motion that we adopt this proclamation.
All in favor?
Aye.
It was your answer. We have proclaimed it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Item 13B, excuse me, 13C. We have another proclamation for State Giving Tuesday, and we have Audra.
Bailey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and audience. I'm Audra Bailey. I'm the Development and Communications Officer for the Shasta Regional Community Foundation. We are your hosts for North State Giving Tuesday this year, and I am your local staff member here in Siskiyou County. The community foundation serves both Shasta and Siskiyou County, so I maintain the office in Mount Shasta and serve a closer connection than the Reading Office, if you will. So we had requested a proclamation. North State Giving Tuesday happens on the Tuesday after Thanksgiving each year. You have meals and deals, and we have Black Friday, Cyber Monday. Six years ago, a group began to proclaim and support a day for giving back after the two days of deals. This has gained in momentum here in Siskiyou County alone. Two years ago, we had represented 16 nonprofits and raised about $450,000 between Shasta and Siskiyou County. Last year, the total nonprofits went up to 96, and we had 32 of them in Siskiyou County. Excuse me, 64. Anyway, my numbers, you know why it's been a lot? Sorry. Anyway, the bottom line is, this has been exponentially growing over the last several years. Last year was $750,000 total for 96. Last year was $750,000 total for 96 nonprofits. And this year, we have 120-plus nonprofits. Our goal, because we're not very good at estimating how much and generous our counties are, is a dollar more than last year. That'd be great. We have a very excellent informative promotional video created by your very own Fisher. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll turn it over if you have any questions. I guess I would just like to let you know, this year, we have improved the website platform thanks to a grant from Pacific Power Foundation and support from Redding Bank of Commerce. And it will allow for advanced scheduling of your donation. So you don't have to be sitting there on the 28th. You can go to www.northstategives.org and schedule your donation in advance, much like you do a bill pay. And it will debit your account on the 28th. And the reason we're doing that is because the Community Foundation has put up $85,000 from our Nodel Family Endowment Fund, whose donors wanted the proceeds from this fund over time to come back in to support nonprofit organizations working in Shasta, Siskiyou County. So each nonprofit that participates, a percentage of what they raise on that day will correspond to a percentage of this $85,000 incentive pool. And they'll get a bonus from that. They'll also get a bonus from 14 hourly sponsors. $500 to a nonprofit in Siskiyou, $500 to a nonprofit in Shasta County. 14 businesses stepped up to meet that goal. They'll be randomly drawn and it'll be very exciting during the day to see who won on what hour. That's a lot.
I think, probably because I don't see it here in the proclamation, just to remind everyone that the donations are taxable.
Yes.
With charitable donations.
Check with your tax advisor, of course. We don't wanna claim that. But a lot of people do their year-end giving at this time of year. So that's why we chose this time of year to participate in this event. And this year, you can also give gifts of stock. If you're age appropriate, you can do your IRA rollovers. So we've expanded the ways that you can give on this day for the benefit of your favorite nonprofits. Minimum of $10 to any, so consider more than one.
All right. Any questions from the council, or from council?
I'd like to point out that I'm sure that if we could, Dr. Budmacher Baker right now would stand up and say that a good donation might be to the COS Scholarship, Promise Scholarship Program, which is gonna be part of the...
The foundation, yes it is.
Would you like me to do that? I think you did it for...
Yeah, that's good. And we had, we saw the Family Resource Center. So we all know some, we all know the nonprofits who are participating. We have 45 in Siskiyou County and a lot of us are involved in one or more. I see them all. So there you go. Hopefully, it'll be a huge success and we'll do it again next year.
Wonderful. Are there any questions from anybody in the audience for Audra at this point? Other than to say that I think the Mount Shasta Trail Association is there?
Yes, yes.
We've got some representatives out there.
And Siskiyou Media Council.
Siskiyou Media Council.
Anybody else?
Siskiyou Arts Association?
The Community Foundation is participating.
I think the Edouard Elementary School Backpack Program is a part of that too.
The food?
The food backpack?
I believe it's for Great Northern. There might be, there might be a part of that.
Oh, Dunsmere Elementary Backpack Program.
Dunsmere's River Exchange. The River Exchange in Dunsmere is also?
I'm not sure.
Okay, I think they were, but there's plenty of nonprofits in Siskiyou County.
Lots to choose from. Minimum of $10 that day. And they will all be very grateful for any donations.
Okay. Well, I'll let you have a seat. I'll read through this proclamation if it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So let me read through this so everyone knows. Whereas Giving Tuesday was established in 2011 as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving. Whereas North State Giving Tuesday is a regional event organized by Shasta Regional Community Foundation as a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism for the benefit of local nonprofit organizations. And whereas the Shasta Regional Community Foundation hosts the online giving platform at www.northstategives.org between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. on November 28, 2017, with incentives for participating nonprofits provided by the, what's it, Nodel?
Nodel.
Nodel, Family Endowment Fund, and area businesses. And whereas North State Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favored causes, and promote many local nonprofit organizations that build stronger communities. And whereas it is fitting and proper on North State Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize and raise awareness of the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Dunsmere. Now, therefore, I, Bryce Craig, Mayor of the Dunsmere City Council, do hereby proclaim November 28, 2017, as North State Giving Tuesday in the city of Dunsmere and encourage all citizens to join together and give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. And witness... Oh, I have to read that part. All right.
Right on.
So it's sort of a mayoral block proclamation, both with the council's approval, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept that proclamation.
Okay.
Or you got it.
Josh Brinkton, all in favor?
Aye.
It was unanimous. Thank you. So November 28, and you can, you can thank the donation ahead of time.
Northstategives.org.
Northstategives.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'll see you.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Moving on to item 14, our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. Okay. Public hearing, we have none.
We have here, I appreciate the numbers, 27, 2...
Okay, thank you. All right, so item 16A. Actually, is it okay? I know that we should have done this before when we accepted the thing. But I know that there's specific people are here for certain items. I don't see anybody represented for a couple of items. Would we be able to reorder some things, just to get...
Sure. I make a motion that E, the Mossberry Falls Trail Project becomes 16-1. And then we'll take A afterwards.
Okay, I think we could also move up the Castle Rock lease agreement as well.
Is that what that is? Okay, you were here first, sir. So Castle Rock would be 1, and then 16-1. And then Mossberry Falls would be 16-2. And then take a rest in order to say here.
Okay, I think that works for me.
Does that work for everybody?
No question. All right. Marty, just wanna make sure you're okay with that?
I'm fine. I just...
Sure.
Turned over my thing and it says 13, and I'm wondering what Dave is talking about 16.
All right, I think...
No, I'm all right.
Technically, this requires a motion in either unanimous or a forfeits vote, so...
I'm all right.
It's been seconded.
Has it been seconded?
Yes, Bruce seconded.
Bruce seconded. Okay, thank you.
Call the vote.
Change that order? Okay, all in favor of changing the order?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. That was unanimous. Okay, we're gonna start then with 16, I think we call it 16-1, the lease agreement with Castle Rock Water.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For you tonight is a request to have a current lease that we have with the city's facility that is used to the bodily water that you'll have in front of us here in the bay. The lease that we currently have, we have the owner of the lease right now, and the audience, Thomas. And I'm sure he's gonna wanna get up to give a little more information on what I currently report. But essentially, he's looking to relinquish the lease and have a partner investor, someone that's gonna take the lease over. And with that, we have all of the terms and everything brought up to date. And right now, there is, there's a back payment that is still owed to the city. So part of this, if the councilship continues to enter some new lease, the contingent of the back payment is up to date for the termination and the acceptance of the new lease. But the new lease, we had our city's attorney, John Kenny, spend some time drafting up the lease agreement. This lease agreement is more of a lawyer kind of term. It's a lot longer and more worthy. And we've worked with the both currently sold or potentially sold to iron out what we've got to spare on most sides. And we've modified the price of the water, which you'll see is much, much higher than what the residents pay. And also, we have updated the price of the filling facility. So it's positive for the general fund, because it's a lease where we receive funds that go to the general fund. And also, it's positive for the water and the price. So the more water they make, the better the bottle, the healthier the water and the price of the water. Based on the way that the business is...
Give me a dough question.
I have, I have some questions holding, whatever you have to that point.
Let's just go down the line, so we'll start with you, Marty.
I have a question as to, what is the base? You have in your narrative that there's a base rent. Is that a figure of $8,000? Is that for the year?
That's it, per month.
Oh, that's per month, okay. And this lease that is attached to it is only for four years?
Yes, there is options. There are six five-year extensions that are approved. And with those extensions, that number that you just mentioned, that $8,050 increases with each extension.
And where is that defined?
So within the lease, if you go within the lease. I'm sure it's on page three.
Page three, one point eight.
1.5. Yeah, and a slight C.
It's the amount of water that they're taking out.
Just wait a minute, I'm not...
So on...
I wanna talk about water rates here.
So option one, if removed, would go from the $8,000 to the, I think, $8,500.
Right, I was having a hard time understanding this.
So if, those are options for extension. So if given options for extension, those would be the monthly rents due for those terms.
And do they have an increase in water rate structures too with each extension?
So the water rate increases are based on each year it's increased at 2%. And the old lease they had, I think it was, the cost was somewhere around, I think it was, I don't know if Julie remembers this, it might have been $12 per gallon or it might have been .012 cents per gallon. I think it was .012 cents per gallon. And with the inflationary, 2% inflationary rate, 2% on just over one penny, but it's still one penny. So we change it to units, it's the same way that the...
That's what we pay for it.
The rest of the city does their payment for the water based on unit. So this lease here reflects what they're paying on a unit, which is much much higher than what the rest of the country.
The other question I have is, how much for this lease to be approved? How much is there owed? Cause I couldn't find it right away.
Yeah, I just got the number from Pam Destoray. And what they sold is $74,304.
Okay, this is a side issue from the piece of the building. But I know that Castle Rock was also leasing a hangar. Was that a vacation I went here for?
I'm not sure.
Do you know if you...
Yes, we did.
Now, the most important question that I have is, who is Q? Q, or how you pronounce it? The person that is hoping to go in there? We don't have any information on who this Q unit is.
We're gonna have a presentation in a moment. But any other, I have the same question. So, okay, you have a couple more questions for Mark?
Yes, sir. What I'm just wondering about, just wanna focus for a moment on the water aspect. Not anticipating or seeing any problem, but I just wanna make sure we've looked at and thought about it for a moment. So how are we able to charge an excess amount for the water above and beyond our initial rate? Is that because of the fact that it's water coming out of the system for commercial use or something?
It's based on the, it's on the lease.
But I understand, but I'm saying, what is the concept behind it?
They have exclusive right to the facility and to the bottled water. And that is the terms set forth.
Okay, but I'm just...
Just, just maybe to answer your question.
Yeah.
You know, prop 18 issues and things like that, you're not allowed to make more on the water enterprise than a cost to run the system. But this is not part of the water enterprise. This is a commercial operation outside of the water.
Okay, thank you. That's all. That's all. My question. Thank you. That's all. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the council?
Right in the phone.
Come up and let us know what's going on.
Thank you for having me and thank you for your support. It's been an interesting path for the company. Being a small water company and it's, let's say, Nestle. 99% of the water business is owned by Nestle, Coke, and Pepsi. This is the guy that the four companies own 99% of the water rates. And we try to go and show that we can be done differently, so we can support the community and pay a fair price for the water. And try to water, sell the water and all the fruits in all the house food stores. And it has been, I would say, not as easy as I thought when I started. But we made some headways. The small companies this year was particularly bad because the glass company who makes bottles was basically sold to the biggest US... There's only really two glass companies in the US, only Illinois. They closed the glass company in San Francisco and moved all their business down to Mexico. And with that, it became a huge shortage in the small companies, like a lot of wineries. Myself and Duke, we were out of bottles for two months. You can imagine a business that's got no bottles and no sales. And as we had, unfortunately, we survived, tried to come out of it. And trying to get more expertise. My, my forte was more in manufacturing, you know? Where I didn't have enough marketing expertise. Victor and the community company, they have a lot of expertise in marketing different national brands. They've done that with other successful brands. And they're willing to invest the money to go to the next level, to bring it to more stores fronts, to be able to pay for, to be in supermarkets, when you go on the shelf, you have to give refill. So you come to Chain Like Sprouts, Whole Foods, they come down, they have, I'd say, 120 stores. And then one immediately, two cases of refill of each item, so eight cases. So you're looking at nearly $40,000 refill. So you have to have that money to actually get into the stores to get shop space. So that's basically what we need, we need more capital to get in. I haven't given up, so to speak. I found somebody who still loves the idea of selling more water. And trying to give another round of better marketing and doing a better job selling it better. They have personal funds themselves, so they have the money to put in a few million dollars into the marketing itself. Which should put, which I may have had, really, to put us on the map in the bigger scale and it should quickly benefit the consumer in the future. That's how you say it, is the U?
It's Q.
Q.
Okay. Did you say QU?
Uh, UQ, yeah. UQ, UQ of this. It's a new company of founders, the name I'm not...
Okay.
You still want us to...
Another question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I'll give you this, do you got 42? You keep coming back, okay? You keep bouncing back. You keep bouncing back. The question is, with me, why glass? I mean, I can't have a glass bottle on the beach in San Francisco, I can't have a glass bottle on the beach in Los Angeles. Why not, why not both? I just was curious, how come you didn't have any glasses?
Takes money.
Takes money. Plastic is more than glass.
It's, I know it's, it's, plastic is obviously less. But say typical plant like the Coke plant, they blow their own bottles. So if you, if we buy the plastic bottles, it's probably about ten cents difference in cost. Where with Coke, so Nestle blows it themselves, makes them, they buy the little molds, they buy a loaded bottle out of it. It costs them, the bottle costs less than six cents. There's a huge difference. We could do that, invest that. So we were thinking early to get into plastic, because there was, there was a senior plastic, bigger bottles in plastic, which we have a price point, which we come up with a bigger bottle, say a couple meters fourths in one, which would be bigger than the other ones, and we have better price point because the filling cost would be still the same. So yes, we do, it's in the making, so the current equipment we have could accommodate these bigger bottles.
Sweet, sweet. So are you still thinking that this size glass bottle though is sort of a differentiator for your company in terms of?
It's a environmental besting, I would say, and was correct thing. And if they, if it does take off, we try to get some celebrities to get behind it because it's glass and recyclable. Ideally, you can take the empty bottles back and clean them, sterilize them, and put them back on. We tried to do that, but our equipment wasn't, was able to sterilize a bottle, but the lipstick was still on the bottle, so.
But I got the lipstick off the bottle.
You have to rub it off, literally physically, just with a spray, a spray washer and spray.
It doesn't work, there's too much wax in there.
Sounds like we need to recruit a bottle manufacturer who does bring some jobs in some light industry that does beer.
Yes, it would be wonderful.
Well, I have to admit that I'm really glad that you had it in glass, because every single bottle that I drink here, I take home, it's easy to get the label off, and I just assume store, you know, anything liquid in glass than in plastic. So thank you very much, I have, I have two cases of your bottles at my house.
Thank you for your support, really. Every model counts.
Any other questions for our friend?
Yeah, I would love to know who this Q limited is.
Well, these are basically, it's a young, a younger couple in their forties, okay? And they, they have funds from own families, okay? And they brought in also one partner, which is, you ever hear about Dr. Motte? Dr. Motte is the guy who made, took water crystals in Japan to put it on a microscope and found that the different waters make beautiful crystalline structure. So much just the water out, the water here made a beautiful crystal like a snowflake. And the same doctor he did analyzing of, say, San Francisco water, Los Angeles water. And the water doesn't, when it freezes, doesn't make same crystalline structure, it's a big shard, look to the crystals. And he found that water has a certain vibration to it. And this Dr. Motte, who we unfortunately passed off, but he did the testing on our water and was, was fantastic. He gave lectures here in Chester and Herschel, it seems it was about seventy, eight years ago at last time, and it was still like. And he has a son and a partner, business partner, who will become partner in the water too, which is really nice, it's really exciting. Because Dr. Motte wrote about twenty books, he says, sorry, on water purity, so it's kind of very exciting.
So this family is connected to the doctor, because I've read, I've read this, you know, on your website, you know, about the residents and all of that. So how are they connected to this doctor?
They certainly approached him, he wants to become investor in the company too, besides us.
But can you tell us a little bit more about Q U limited? Who, you know?
It's Victor's strategy, he started a lot of coconut companies, chocolate coconuts, yeah? A very successful chocolate company. And basically, he has done other business ventures in liquids, soy, soy drinks, and also nut, nut nuts and so on. And decided to, he was, water is a passion, and wanted to put in, he's basically putting in a couple million dollars in this business.
And where are they based, I don't know?
Out of Los Angeles. Developing back the two to some of the movie industries, and some of the who are in check is Los Angeles. And actually already kind of stepped in to promote the water. This is speaking at the conference for all E corporations, P corporations. It's a for-profit company, but they expect you to be first for employees before the profit comes, so. And he has a whole conference this weekend, and he actually sponsors some of this, this giving water for the conference, and all these business leaders. One of the most, most one is Patagonia. Patagonia has probably started a movement for getting back to the land, getting back to employee, being an asset for a company. And you see on the bottle, there's a little logo on there, this on the side here, this is the here for life. This is a certification we got. And it's basically the same as Fairtrade. Yeah, all everybody hear about Fairtrade, right? Fairtrade is basically the, get inspected, so they treat the, Fairtrade was meant for the third world because there was so much exploitation going on. And so they're using the Fairtrade name for the third world, but the for life is for best in hemisphere for companies who work together with communities. And we got the certification because the community, Dunsmere, is the beneficiary of the water. And which is quite different from Nestle going into some of the state parks and getting it for nothing, basically.
Are you, are you expecting that they would also bottle in bottles? Do you have any idea what their expectations are?
They continue growing it, I think mostly their focus will be on marketing. And marketing the water to be able to influential people, influential chefs in Los Angeles to basically speak about the water and carry it, and talk about how good it is and how it supports community in an effort of bringing money back into the community. This really was my first, so I was excited because you could give something back. Because the national resources, I think, only somebody idealism, it would have gone into this water venture. Because if you, if any company who takes national resources out, gold, silver, oil, or whatever, just a small fraction would go back to the country fund or state fund, you know, could pay for taxes, really, yeah? And it's pretty much an evolutionary thought, so we are really making history. And if it gets successful, we are making history in Dunsmere, showing that it can be done. We can have a successful company who can give back to the community. This was kind of my initial drive to actually get a business going in the first place.
The question that I really have is, do you expect that they are also going to bottle in glass?
Oh, yeah, they'll continue.
I also think they're not going to have the same problem that you did, driving such a small company and having access to the required container.
To get the glass container?
Yeah.
Oh, I have in the meantime already started new glass companies, to set up some contacts with new glass companies, so it doesn't happen again. So that's a good thing, we have one already in the pipeline to get us new bottle and more stable supply and get away from the one big giant here.
Okay.
One quick question, just real quick.
Yes.
Please, sir. So I just want to make clear, because I know it's a lot of great stuff there, but what you said about promoting the water is, you want people around the world to know that Dunsmere has the best water on earth, is that what you're saying?
That's basically the idea, not just the best water, I think the best water, maybe won it once, maybe won the best water, which is fantastic. And, but, and they want gold and gold silver at second year. And we competed against everybody in the world, which was really fantastic, and we want that. But the most important is, I think, the more exciting part is that it gives back to the community. Besides being the best water, although there's a little story, it comes like a little fair price back to the community. It's really important part. And that's where nowadays, where the businesses who do well, like Patagonia and so on, they, it's becoming a driver, it's a billion dollar movement already, which is still small compared to Nestle, who is like a hundred billion dollar company, you know? But it's, it's coming, and it starts small, and, you know? You can see what Tesla did with their electric car, it's really changing, and has a substantial change. And it's, it's in many ways a disruptive, disruptive business, you know? Because we're disrupting the flow of Nestle and Coke and Pepsi to go against that. And showing that we can make it work, paying a fair price back. We set that standard, and the idea is that really takes a momentum. Really good for Dunsmere, so. But it does take money. I spent four million dollars of my own money so far, only time and money, so. It's a lot more than solid wood spend, but I have given up. And I found a lot of people who are just as crazy as me, don't want to put the money into to make their goal for one step further. But marketing is probably was making its weakness, and I hope with that, I still stay a minority inside the business. Certainly still there on the board, helping the business especially run it, so I'm not going away.
Are we going to see a change of name, or?
No, we don't change a name, I don't change a name, obviously.
All right, I'd like to open up to the public for any public comments on, or no, is this, yes, thank you. Public comment, or any questions for Thomas for the public?
Maybe I misunderstood, but are you saying that you cannot recycle these glass ones?
No, yes, you can.
You can.
You get the lipstick off the glass, and that's the plastic.
Yes, that's right. It gets still recycled, but it goes into the big bottle recycling, rather than do it, maybe this is part of the class. This bottle actually was made as half recycled glass, so just for you to know.
Just to clarify, what he said earlier was that their sterilization machines at the plant could sterilize the bottle, but left lipstick on the bottle. So the bottle's going to be recycled, but for then...
Okay, I guess my question is, where is all these glass bottles though?
They can go into the general glass recycling.
Well, any, any, any glass bottle goes to the channel recycling, they remelt the glass and make new glass out of it. They only can use fifty percent of it as a cycle.
Do these glasses, does it go to your company or somewhere else?
No, they're regular recycling. I would love to take it back. That was the ideal thing, because it costs, you know, fifty cents a bottle, so it'd be the glass itself, so it'd be, if I could bring it back and then clean it, that would be, that would be my dream. But it takes more money, more infrastructure on trucking to bring the bottles back. I think a lot of the stores are open to collect the bottles, so they can pick it back up. And we tried it, we tried a few pallets of it to clean it up, and unfortunately, we weren't able to get them totally cleaned. So we need a bigger bottle washing machine basically at the end of the day.
Tim?
Well, I think an obvious question is, your new partner is okay with paying seventy-four thousand dollars to the arrears on there currently?
That's right, it's part of the deal to get the order balanced out.
Any other public questions for Thomas, or just comments on the side of? Okay, closing point for public comment then. Any other questions or comments from the council at this time?
No.
I did want to add, one other question from Thomas was, you talked a little bit about where the new partner hopes to take the company in terms of the increased marketing effort. Locally, here in Dunsmere, are there any plans for expansion or for creation more jobs or anything like that that you can speak to now?
That's all.
Assuming things go well, of course.
Assuming things go well, I like to see forty, fifty people working in there, it would be wonderful, you know?
Do you have the capacity for that?
We have the capacity to, so. We can do special, we can make several shifts, and this is every shift we could increase. So fifteen people per shift is good, could be helpful. We would need more space, and warehouse is the only biggest thing we don't have. We don't have a lot of warehouse space. So we would have to ideally fill up, really go on a truck, you know, to the house, the sauce.
How many Dunsmere nights work here now?
I think two. You want to say Dunsmere nights? But it's hard to just sing out always, you want to get the best person for the job, yeah? But they all, they all from here, they all from Chester, I believe.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions for Thomas at this time?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the city council relinquish and resume the current lease holder of the city's bottling facility, Flora Inc., and authorize the city manager to enter into a new lease with Q Limited for a four-year term lease commencing on November first, two thousand seventeen.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I'm just curious, Mark, I know you had Mr. Kenny look over the lease and everything. Is there a specific reason why, obviously the lease, the current lease needed to be rescinded and then there is a new lease, but is there a reason why it's structured in this way? Is that because the ownership took up at Flora changed in such a way that we couldn't just continue to contract with Flora?
Yeah, we needed to clearly show that this, that the current lease that we have, which is a completely different language and everything, and who that lease, who owns the lease is no longer going to be a party. So this is a completely new lease, the terms are very similar. We want to make sure that it's clear that the old lease, the old owner who is the owner is not a party.
But it's structured in such a way that Q limit is the leasing, and Flora is considered a third party, but they're both signatories throughout the lease?
Well, not at the, I believe at the end of the lease, they are not signatories, yes. So you can see that they're signing, basically showing that they agree to sign this, so. But at the end, it's just...
Just a Q limit, I think.
But the lease starts at zero deficit.
And where is that?
The...
You see I left that portion blank, with the lease, there is a, the part that's in the arrears. And it's good to be good. I left that blank because we didn't know what that number would be, and it's got something on page one, paragraph one twenty-three. Second paragraph of one twenty-three, there shows for and in consideration of the lease or according to regional enrichment and reception of the form of the Q limited agrees to pay the city Dunsmere any and all back rent code under the form of the current capital as blank, together with, and which puts zero percent interest rate in there. Just to, we were really looking to figure the account of the current, and then just change it. So we will fill that number in, and that's the number that money is, seven thousand four thousand three hundred and four dollars.
And that's expected to be just a lump sum, if not over?
No, a lump sum, yeah. And that's due before the lease is...
Right, okay, cool.
All right, thank you for that, Mark. We have a motion in a second, if there are any other questions at this time, call a vote.
Go call.
No, there's no, we're not spending any money, it's just...
Okay.
Okay?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe that was unanimous.
Good luck, Godspeed.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. I keep saying Thomas because I don't exactly know how to pronounce your last name, it was like Creep?
You're great.
Raider?
Yeah, I said, that's right.
You got more gray hair last time.
You're good, eh?
Thank you very much, okay.
Here we go.
I believe we moved item two.
Moss Gray.
I guess I'm here.
Moss Gray.
The Moss Gray Trail proposal?
Boo, boo, boo.
Mark, do you have any introductory comments on this Moss Gray Trail proposal, or should I invite up our guests?
I would be prepared to do that.
Okay. Tonight we have Mr. Joseph Worth and Mr. Tom Heseldenz, both from the Mount Chesta Trails Association. Tom was also a consultant on this project. This is certainly a long time in the making. We've been working as a, as a committee, sort of a subset of our, our committee over the last several months. We met with the U P Railroad a couple of months ago, had a very productive meeting with them. And at that time, they outlined specifically that they wanted a proposal from our group, whether that was from the city or from the Trails Association, so regardless, just outlining exactly what the ask was for a trail proposal. Of course, U P is concerned with helping get the people off the tracks from trespassing on the tracks. And so at, at our meeting, it went really well and we had a, a very positive meeting with them. But the next step is to get the, an actual proposal approved by U P's real estate department because it would be that department that approves any sort of lease of, of their property. And since the proposed trail route on the west side of the river is on U P's property, then we need to get them to approve it. So thanks to the tireless work of Mr. Heseldenz and Mr. Worth and the other people, specifically at the Mount Chesta Trails Association, have been really helpful along with some other consultants that through the credit of nation, the Trails Association has been able to hire. We were able to put together about a nineteen-page proposal, maybe a little less than that. Specifically, I just want to thank Tom for, for a lot of this work. He did a bulk of the writing on this proposal and just really spearheaded it. And so we all as a community have Tom to thank for a lot of the amazing access that we have to lands and trails around this area. But specifically on this proposal, we did an amazing amount of work. So with that, you want to come up and just give us a brief little synopsis of the proposal?
Sure.
Okay. And I'll just add that the, this has really come together in the last week and a half or so. I sort of rushed it to get on, get on the council's agenda for tonight so that some work could continue to go forward with the council's approval, hopefully. So again.
I'd like to thank Joe Worth from the Trails Association for putting a lot of time and energy and coming up with a lot of funding. And then we've got a private donor who recently put up two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So that's been a huge arm of help moving this forward. I started on this after the Cantara spill back in nineteen ninety-one. Southern Pacific was willing to put a million dollars in to look at the front. The Saint Germain Foundation didn't want the trail going through their property, so it fell by the wayside. But it was rekindled about six years ago because of the dramatic increase in people going to the falls along the railroad tracks and the safety concerns with that. And then eventually an injury, fortunately not a death, but it went and was hit by a train and survived. So we went back to Saint Germain and tried again, but they just don't lock the trail on their property. And the advantage of going on Saint Germain property is because we could have it be maybe a compliant trail. With about a three percent grade upon Saint Germain property, it would be steeper on the Henry Falls side, but still compliant, making it easier for people to get to the falls. The route we're looking at now has to provide as much separation from the tracks as we can squeeze out of it. And the tracks are perched on a steep side slope, about thirty feet above the river, thirty-five feet above. But we can go about three to five feet above the river, down at the bottom of that steep slope, and get a minimum of forty feet of separation horizontally, thirty feet vertically. So on the angle, it's about fifty feet. And we're really hoping that the road will, will be okay with that. Their ideal is to have a hundred feet of separation. But in this particular case, it is so dangerous on the tracks that this is the lesser two evils from safety point. It'd be much safer to be down there away from the trains. The trail won't be usable all year because it will go in the falls. We can build it out of boulders and smaller block interlocked and make it fairly resilient to those high flows. It will require a bridge over the river, as would the Saint Germain route. The Saint Germain Bridge was going to be about three hundred and fifty feet downriver from the falls with a view of the falls from the bridge. The current bridge will be down at the mouth of Hedge Creek. So that's how we could get people. So it starts on city land. The city's property line is more or less in the middle of the river out from the mouth of Hedge Creek. And that's where we go on the Union Pacific Land. At the falls itself, because the railroad tracks cut through a ridge, their two-hundred-foot right away doesn't reach the river at the falls. Saint Germain's property actually crosses the river right at the falls and includes the beach. The public's been going there for a hundred and thirty years, so there's a really well documented prescriptive right of public use there. We are not proposing to build the trail on Saint Germain property, but just get people there to that existing prescriptive right. So it's the best we can do. It's not the ideal. But given the safety issue, coupled with the strange donation that we received and economic interest of the community to maintain access to the falls, we feel like that's a time to move forward with this approach and hope that the railroad signs up on it.
So just a couple of things, Tom. The total budget for the project is around five hundred thousand dollars?
About five hundred and twenty thousand. And that was with three segments of prefabricated steel truss bridge blown in by a sky crane. We've had some more recent conversations on doing a suspension bridge, but we might be able to do it for less money. The topography is very limiting down there because you have that huge rock outcrop that the viewing platform is currently on. And that rib of bedrock goes down to the mouth of Hedge Creek. So we either have to notch a spot on that about twenty feet above the river because we have to have the bridge be above the high rock. And that, we think we might still be able to do a suspension bridge, but we're going to look at it. But the other alternative alternative is to go to the other side of Hedge Creek where there isn't a rock outcrop and we get a cleaner cross in there for a suspension bridge. But then we have to do a small bridge over Hedge Creek. So we'll work that up as part of the engineering if the railroad approves this. We've also been talking to Inplan and Bedding about CEQA and regulatory permits. So once we have railroad approval, it's basically a full court crash to get CEQA done, get the permits done, the engineering, get this thing whole, completely dialed in, have a trail contractor on board, the same one that did the upgrade on the Hedge Creek Falls Trail, and get in there and get this thing built. And the major donor would love to see it built by next summer.
That's, that's a realistic tagline in your estimation at this time?
Yeah, yeah. If the railroad approves it and if we get the other fifty percent of the funding and we have some ideas on that. And if the regulators work with us, the big issue is bird nesting. Normally, they don't want you to start a problem, a project until July fifteenth. At Town Valley Park, we started early. We had thought and do an Essingbird survey first because they weren't there. And that's what we'll do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
A long time ago, I had dinner with, with the friend of Baines and four guys from the railroad, one of them was dead. He was the big one. And this is right at the time that lady got hit with the train.
Two thousand ten.
At dinner, he sat there, I was there at the time. And he sat down there and he said, Union Pacific, if you can get the land from Saint Germain, we can get the land. Union Pacific will build the bridge, we'll bring it up, and we'll place it for you. So they were at one, or at the time, willing to help with building the bridge and putting it there. So I heard him say it with his whole mouth.
So it would be wonderful if they matched the over fifty percent of the funding. The problem with them placing the bridge is there's so many trees. To get a crane that would be on the tracks to reach and set this thing in it because of the trees, it looks like it would be easier to have a sky crane fly in and set it.
Okay. I, I think.
I'm just glad that we're talking about it.
Yeah. You know what I mean? Where this could.
Can you taste it? Can you taste it?
The railroad has been very helpful and cooperative so far. And I anticipate that they will continue to be in whatever way is that they can. So they've made similar statements in the past in various regards. And we hope that they're, they're willing to do everything that they can.
Good job, guys.
Yes, Marty.
Tom, if you're allowed to disclose, can you tell us who this major benefactor is?
He's being bashful about it.
I can understand that. I was just.
What is his name out there? Yeah, so I'm honored to know.
Have you proposed to come up with the other, you know, friends?
We're going to talk to McConnell Foundation, Ford Family Foundation. We've been talking about crowdfunding and we'll talk to the railroad.
We were just talking with Dave Ure, Senator Gaines' fellow, and he was saying that, well, Dave, you want to talk to him first. McConnell would be interested in stepping up and helping.
That's right. Enname nation, Demossary Falls.
I mean, I've been to Moss Gray Falls, so.
Well, another source would be the state, but the problem there is you have to apply for it. It's competitive. It's not a given thing and.
Didn't you say by next summer?
That's what I'm leading up to. We chose not to go down out with the state because it would take much longer and it would be uncertain. And they would want everything to go out to competitive bid. And we've assembled a team of so sort of people who have proven, proven themselves on other projects. Inplan did the environmental for Town Valley Park. The trail contractors along the, the Hedge Creek Falls Trail. So by going that route, we speed up the process tremendously.
Just another important thing to note before we have public comment on this is that one of the things in this proposal is just a reminder that the University of Maryland already has a lease of a similar nature for kind of, right?
Yeah. Oh, thank you for mentioning that because that was another issue with going to state. Because state grant funding requires a land tenure for at least twenty years. It can be a lease, but it has to have some longevity to it. The railroad actually wanted to do a month-to-month, but we pointed out, well, at Town Valley, we have it year-by-year, but it's not twenty years. So going the route we're going now, we don't need that twenty-year commitment.
Just, just to clarify that for everyone, because it took me a while, grabbed my head around it. Going after state money, they require a lease to be in place that has like a twenty-year commitment. The railroad generally, as we've been advised by some railroad people, generally isn't willing to offer anything beyond just a month-to-month. The city currently has a year-to-year lease for a dollar a year for property around Town Valley Park.
It's actually Hedge Creek, not Town Valley, isn't it? It's Hedge Creek, not.
No, the, the railroad lease that I'm referring to is at Town Valley. The interesting thing about Town Valley Park is that the city owns very little of it. It is a wonderful example of partnership. You've got Caltrans with Highway Five and the eight-hundred-foot bridge. The city's property is where the lift station downstream side. You've got Pacific Power with their substation, half the parking lot there at Town Valley is on Pacific Power. And then the, where the levee went up along the river that we moved back away from the river, that's the railroad land that they bought in nineteen forty-six because the landslide you had last winter that came down on Dunsmere Avenue, there was a much bigger one back then that buried the tracks and it buried the river. So they rerouted the river and realigned the tracks and ended up with this property that we wanted to put the trail on through town property. So that's how the lease came out of that. And then we also arranged for the state to buy the Lansman property as part of Town Valley Park. And the state still holds that. So it, but it does provide a precedent for the railroad to consider something similar for Moss Gray Falls.
Where is their involvement down at Hedge Creek? Is there?
At Hedge Creek.
Yeah, do they have any involvement?
No.
I'm sorry?
The railroad, no, it's just the city ownership down to about the middle of the river.
Yeah, in the packet here in the supporting documents, just after the page that outlines the budget, is the Town Valley lease. You can see the example there. And you can also see.
Yeah, they're chiming in.
Yeah.
You can see the sight line in there is color-coded, so the green is the city ownership. Purple was Saint Germain. And then the railroad I did in color and Nyle family that's land on the other side.
The who family?
Nyle. Jim Bell and Nyle.
That's all the other?
And then Hal Bowman is upstream from there, the orange. Yeah.
Are there any other questions from the council this time or any other comments? Any questions about the Moss Gray proposal? Tom's here to answer them.
I'm not intelligent enough to ask you intelligent questions about all of this budget. So I imagine that you are.
I'm sorry, Marty, is it okay if we have public comments at this time?
Oh, sorry. I didn't know that you were.
Sorry about that. Any other comments or questions for Tom?
Well, I find it's more of a Thomas Trail Association.
Yeah, come to the line, Joe.
You are a joke.
So we've been, we've been a long discussion. Final.
It missed me in the morning.
A moment of silence. Anyway, we were working on this for at least six years and trying many approaches, which Tom outlined for you. Today, this certainly is the most positive thing that we've seen in the past six years. And this is the case where as I look at it, everybody, everybody involved in this has something to gain. The railroad has a lot to gain, City of Dunsmere or the Trails Association. And so there's a lot of positive things that make me feel encouraged so we can get this done. And in term, in terms of looking for additional funds, we're pursuing private, private money because once, it's, it's faster to get it. And once you get it, there's less to rock and roll, you made it the money, you actually spent it. So if we had to go to state money, that would take us longer and they'd pick your pain, pick your pain to get it. So we have, Trail Association has a good track record with McConnell Foundation. We just got a very large grant from them for a trail built along, mountainous trails on mountain. Again, we're trail system. We just got four hundred and twenty thousand from that. We're doing that. So I think we have a good, good connection with them. That's certainly a place we'll go to. But I would fully expect the railroad to come forth with some significant support if we need to stop. And it's not in forms of, of actual money. It may be in, in getting the work done, in helping us bring the rocks, all the rocks we're going to need, and helping us get materials transported to the site and helping us with the construction. So we're going to go with this and push real hard if we can to get it worked. This is the most encouraging thing we've had in the past six years. And at least all things seem to be lined up to move it forward. We had a very good response from, as, as Bryce said, from the railroad people that were here. They said it meant their safety standards and they would be willing to take the proposal back to their headquarters in Omaha. So we will talk to them after tonight and, and proceed with, with U P, with that quarter.
One thing, if maybe Joe, if you want to stand here, maybe Tom, if you want to come back up just, just to help me answer this question. We have, we went back and forth a little bit, pardon me, if you can clarify. The version of the proposal that we have in our packet is from, is sort of from the perspective of the city. The Trails Association did say that they were willing to sort of change that language so that it was coming from the Trails Association instead.
They're okay with that.
So if we didn't want to do that, we, we could do that tonight and still adopt the resolution going forward. Essentially, what's before the council tonight is a resolution attached with this proposal. The resolution, we'll, we'll get to the reading of the resolution. Essentially, it's to just present to the, to the railroad. Essentially, it's to just present to the railroad that the city wants to pursue a lease and is in favor of that and in accordance with the proposal. But it doesn't necessarily say that the city's gonna commit to all of the things in the proposal because some of that still needs to get worked out, specifically areas. We want to make sure that we're being comprehensive with this proposal and including things like, you know, proposed trail maintenance program with maybe dozens to volunteer time or maybe some, maybe some obligation from the city to provide, you know, somebody, maybe it's through the Parks and Recreation Department, maybe it's a city employee, we don't know, maybe it's someone from the Trail Association. It all depends on, you know, if we have funding for...
Somebody's got a dump trash can.
Right, exactly. So, there is gonna be improvements made to the Hetch Creek Falls trail, sort of trailhead there, maybe as something beyond what's just in this proposal. But a lot of the concerns that have been brought up about a trail to Mossbury Falls are, the safety concerns are obviously addressed by this proposal. But also, we want it to be a place, a trail that the city is also proud of and Trail Association would be proud of. Another important thing I think to have to say would be that we're not trying to increase the amount of people going to Mossbury Falls with this. We're trying to take the people who are going there, who have been going there, and move them 40 feet this way and 30 feet down to get them out of the way of the train. And that's what this proposal does. So, you know, are there any questions or are any, is it okay if we move forward with this or do you want another copy of this that changes that sort of perspective?
It's really about the resolution and support, so you can there, you may add.
Are you done with public comment?
I'm sorry, are there any more public questions in the comments for Tom or Joe?
Yes, thank you.
I have a question, Dan. You know, it's brought up every time, every weekend. Is there anything in here that you have thought about where? Is just the trail or are we worrying about where parking? Is that something we're gonna worry about later? Because all this, all this just deals with the actual trail.
But parking, one thing I didn't mention was there was previous access to Mossbury Falls. Most recent access before people started going out for chassel retreat was that Prospect Avenue, and there was a footbridge over the river, and people would get on the tracks there and walk off. And that footbridge washed out in 1986. The Department of Fish and Game bought land there for fishing access, river access, as part of that. So, that parking was pretty limited. There's actually more movement at Hetch Creek than what there has in Prospect. When the Prospect Bridge washed out, then people started using chassel retreat, and incidentally, the railroad had a staging area there by the tracks that became a de facto parking lot. But that wasn't that big either, and the railroad eventually closed that off because they didn't want people doing that. They don't want people on the tracks either. So, most recently, people have been parking along Gunspar Avenue and walking down Scarlet Way, and it's really inadequate parking there. So, relatively speaking, Hetch Creek is the best parking. All along the freeway fence there, you can get quite a few cars in place. There were plans, that I grew up on actually, to have aid spaces on the other side of the railway. There used to be a loop that went through there, and that would include handicap parking. And that was going to be part of the east side route that included St. Germain land. In order to be a compliant, we needed a parking, restroom, changes in routing of the Hetch Creek Falls itself, trail to make it less steep, a bridge over Hetch Creek near Hetch Creek Falls. All of those were part of the previous design process. But what we're looking at now, as Bryce mentioned, we're not looking to increase use, we're not looking to make it easier, because now people have to draw 100 feet vertically to get from the Hetch Creek parking lot down the river. Whereas before, they were that great on river tracks, you'd go a little bit longer from Scarlet Way. So, we're not looking to improve Hetch Creek Falls trail right now. We're not looking to improve the trailhead. We're just trying to get people off the tracks and provide a legal and safe way to the falls. And the parking piece of that equation will be better than everything we've had before. I think there's still a need to improve parking more in the future, but I think there's room there along the front, along that road to do that. We just don't have that in the budget right now.
Thank you.
I have another comment. Bryce, your comment of the use of tracks to get to the falls is increasing travel over the past few years. A couple months ago, I took a look on the internet, got all the websites in Mossbury Falls. I got 105, and they all tell you how wonderful this is, one of the outstanding sites in the state of California. And I think that's a major part of the reason of seeing so many people going. And that's not something that's gonna change. People are going to the falls, and we're going there, it's not certain. We need to get this done and possibly get that.
I don't think I ever seen you smile before. We're close, Tom.
This feels real. Yes, this feels real.
The one thing I think needs to be brought up is that, hate to be throwing a little water on this, but if it takes somebody going all the way down through this trail to some people that straight, another group is gonna say, hey, guess what? We can still go back up to the bridge and just walk down the tracks. So, it's not like this is gonna throw a gate across people going down the tracks or...
Well, it's not.
As a matter of fact, it might well do that. So, railroad would like a fence.
They would like to do that.
Oh, I see, so there would be a word up there saying you're not gonna be able to get to the falls.
They want it, they want a bomb fence. They want this thing, bomb fruit. Expanded steel, at least six feet high, maybe eight feet high. It's pricey, it's in the budget because they want it. But I don't think they're gonna need it, and I worded it that way in the proposal, because I think once you get a trail built, it'll be so much more interesting, enjoyable than tracks and a lot safer. Part of this is that, you know, as Joe was saying, the internet played a role in this huge increase in use. Well, one thing about Google is you Google Mossbury Falls, and I've twice now run into people up on Mont Road right by one of St. Germain's gates, but actually the city's gate to go into the water source. And they're up there going, how do we get to the falls? It's showing right here, and they show me on their iPhone.
Because you're not saying in Google search, but on Google Maps, it is Mossbury Falls, it's right there.
So, we need to get it on Google Maps and...
Show them the entrances.
Yeah, to show them Hetch Creek Falls is the trailhead. And I think that'll help tremendously to get that little piece of this worked out. But, and other forms of advertising, including some signage, I think, down in Scarlet Way to let people know, don't, maybe this isn't access anymore, there's access up here at Hetch Creek. Once we get that word out, I'm hoping that the railroad won't want that fence. Well, in the drawings and in the budget, there's actually two fences. There's one at Mossbury that would tie into the bridge over the river and come back, cutting off that whole big flat area. So, at the downstream end, it would be where the steep slopes right up against the tracks. And at the upstream end, it would be the bridge itself, completely seaming that off. And then across from the Mount Hetch Creek with the bridge would be, there's another big flat staging area, and that would be fence. If the railroad insists on it, so it shall be. I just don't think they're gonna need it. And it did get brought to my attention that anglers who like to fish above Mossbury Falls have been locking the tracks for years, and this would prevent them from getting more Mossbury once they get down into the river and go on the roof of the bridge.
Which is what they do it for.
Well, they're fishing right there and they have no way to find it. But the amount of people fishing up there is such a small number compared to all the people wanting to go to Mossbury Falls. So, I don't think that's gonna be a problem for the railroad for continued occasional use of the tracks for fishing access from Mossbury all the way up to Cantera, because they cover that whole stretch.
And that trout is limited property there?
It's California trout, but it's, they have a piece that when I was with Cal Trout, we actually, that's part of this, what happened after the spill is Southern Pacific needed PR desperately, and they were wanting to restock the river, and they wanted the river to recover naturally, which it did really well. I mean, their fishing was better after the spill. And it only took two and a half years. But to give them things to do, we started the trash cleanup. They spent a million bucks on that to clean up 40 miles of the river. They were gonna do the trail, not only to Mossbury Falls, but all the way up to Cantera. We bought the piece that Cal Trout still has, that's about, what, half a mile up from Mossbury. And then we also bought Cantera Loop itself, where the river, the railroad, it hurt. And that subsequently got sold to the state. So, people are fishing all the way through there. And one of the reasons Southern Pacific was willing to put a million dollars into this is they would have loved to have gotten people off the tracks all the way up through there. So, I designed a trail route that would do that, and that would be great to do in the future. But that's another opportunity that goes beyond what we're doing now. If there's five other private landowners that need to be convinced, regardless, irrespective of St. Germain, if we do this other route and we get up past St. Germain, we still have five other private landowners to work with. Roseburg is the main one. But that's a huge project. You know, we're trying to stay really focused here right now and solve this huge problem with Mossbury, because that's where most of the people are going.
Not to belabor the safety issue, but in the proposal, you'll see a picture that Tom actually took. And it's from this summer, summer 2017, and I can count, you know, 20 or so people there on the tracks, someone with a dog and small children, and I'm sure Tom swam up the river to take this picture.
I was working on the trail project.
That's right.
We got a land surveyor in there. We had, we wanted to document through the railroad that we could be at least 40 feet away. So, I went down there and I flagged the route, got the surveyor in there. And that's when I was working with the surveyor that day when all those people went by. And then I went back with some volunteers to brush up the route so I could measure the types of trail work that needed to be done. It's going to be a very challenging project because there's a lot of holders, it's a very steep side slope, not a lot of water. So, I'm down there doing that, and more people are walking by. And then just last week, I was in there with California Fish Wildlife, Department of Fish and Game, because they wanted to do a pre-application view of it. So, we did, and I just walked through the dam, and still more people on the tracks every time I've been there. That's just the way it is.
And that just reminds me of the point again, because of the generous donation from our good friend and benefactor of this project, the work is ongoing and it continues on. You know, regardless of any action that the council takes right now, the Trail, Mount Chastis Trail Association is doing the work, the groundwork now continues to do so, so that this can be a success for us in the future. So, again, I just want to say...
I just want another comment we're on. Tom mentioned waiting until we get approval from the railroad to pursue the sequel, sequel. Some of the sequel could be done starting very, very soon, prior to getting approval from the railroad and taking, putting some of the money at risk. And individuals who've donated the money is willing to put some at risk if the railroad, in case the railroad is tested out.
In order to expedite the work.
In order to get it done and get some done before the snow comes.
You agree?
Well, I'm hoping it's coming Saturday. I'd hate it before it gets too deep. Before it gets too deep. So, we're gonna put some money at risk and hopefully get approval from the railroad.
All right, thank you guys.
Yes. Julie, what is the resolution number on this?
13.
13?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, resolution of the City Council of the City of Duncemere relating to the Mossbury Falls trails, whereas the City Council of the City of Duncemere has been presented with a proposal of the Mount Chastis Trail Association to construct a pedestrian trail to Mossbury Falls to avoid conflict with Uni-Pacific Railroad right-of-way railroad traffic and, whereas the proposal requires the lease of an easement of Uni-Pacific Railroad to the City of Duncemere as set forth in the proposals prepared for, prepared by the Mount Chastis Trails Association, and whereas the City of Duncemere is supportive of the establishment of a pedestrian trail from Mossbury Falls. Now, therefore, it will be resolved by the City Council of the City of Duncemere that Uni-Pacific Railroad considering leasing of the right-of-way to the City of Duncemere to assist in establishing a trail to Mossbury Falls. I make a motion that we accept this resolution.
Second that, Colonel Dush.
Do you want to do that?
You got it already.
I was gonna say that you worked on the project.
I'll say that.
There you go.
All right, so we have a motion and a second in support of Resolution 13. All right, call it up, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we have unanimous agreement.
You're gonna walk down, huh?
Yeah.
I know what they...
All right, again, I would thank Tom and Joe for all their hard work.
True warriors.
And we've asked for a five-minute recess before we continue our agenda, so please join us in five minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, did you keep in mind?
It's what I'm sharing, did we also get a lead or was she in here?
No, we didn't, she's right there.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a note of something?
Mexican restaurant close to nature?
No, no. We'd like to note that Dr. Spoonmaker, as he left the building here, gave us a $20 bill to be turned over, right there it is, for paint, as a donation for paint from the block.
Oh.
All right. Well, thank you to him. Okay, were we convening here with item 16-3?
A.
Called it, A. Vegetation management of vacant city property, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, same with the mayor, members of the council. No staff before here, this was a petition that was sent around and there was a memo dated, let me bring this up here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, dated 10/12. And they asked that we brought to the City Council, and I was also asked by council to bring this to the future meeting, which was today. So, this is what I brought. I didn't have time to do the staff before, but there is a memo that they put in there. I went, I tried to get to the site to look to see what kind of fire danger is there. And when I drove up to it, I looked up these steep rocks and cliffs and couldn't figure out how to get to the property. I tried to drive around, looking at the map, it is landlocked and other properties. Julie did explain to me how I could get to the property, but I never got back out there. But from what I was able to see from the road, it just looked like everywhere else. So, I'm not quite sure what the concern is just for fire danger. I think it's any worse than anywhere else in the canyon that we live in. But there is a petition. We are looking at it. Certain merit, we need somebody to call if the season's appropriate, maybe get in there, get needed to do some clearing, brush if that's the case. But when they first came up with this, the fire season was full for us at the fire zone in Santa Rosa and across California. So, if there was no one available, if it's an issue, it is something we may, we'll definitely look at in the spring and every summer to see if we can get somebody in there to clear out conditions that may...
All right. Any public comment on that?
Where's this place at, the vacant property?
If you dug down Butterfly, hit the south, and it went as a road near to One Way, you looked up, there's rocks and holders, that's a property of the...
Just on the left?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Hey.
We'll close the podium for public comment then. So my understanding is that-
What can we say here?
There's nothing we can do.
My understanding is the city manager has looked at the issue, referred it to law enforcement and fire chief for further investigation at the appropriate time, and that we expect to hear, hear back from them. If there's a, if there's a probability sort of thinning or fuel management, this seems like something to me that should be passed along to the Fire Safety Council as well, or at least down to them. But if we don't have some active Fire Safety Council, then it's up to our, it's up to us to figure out what to do, right?
Might I tell you, I did talk with the fire chief, and he said that, that whole, this whole area is, you know-
Timber blocks.
Because if there's going to be a fire, it's a concern for all. He didn't visit the site specifically, but he didn't think it was any worse than anywhere else as well. And Sergeant Murray did say that we may be able to get some crew to come in. I'm not sure if there's a cost associated, but we'll see.
I think at a minimum, we should direct the fire chief to visit the two sites. And has that been done?
No, he can, he doesn't come back from the fire, he's on vacation now.
Okay. Yes, Mary?
Well, I live by one of these areas. In fact, I can see it from my front yard. Doesn't look anywhere near as bad in some of the other areas in town. And being associated with the Fire Safety Council, there's not only this that the memo refers to, but the eleven acres that the city owns that is commonly known as Hobo Camp. That cost a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars in actual money and then volunteer effort, or the cal fire, you know, doesn't match, to just clear out Hobo Camp. And to people that are associated here, all sort of face that whole area, and I question why they are not clearing their own land.
I'm sorry.
We also, we also, you know, there was a grant that cleared out and helped the homeowners up in Blackberry Hill that is one of the, that abuts the properties that the city owns. When we put together the wildfire-
That's the plan?
Yes.
WAP.
The WAP. And we went through every single parcel and, you know, debated as to the, what would need to be tackled first. This was certainly not anything that was an emergency situation. Other areas in town did are far worse. But the whole city is actually, when you look at a ground fire map, the whole city's in a lot of trouble. So I appreciate the fact that most of these people that signed the petition, you know, live down there by Butterfly. It is no worse than some of the areas in town.
I think we want to make sure that we're being responsive to this petition now in terms of thanking them for bringing this to our attention and understanding the importance of it in the larger context, as you say. Is it okay, is anybody, does anybody object to directing staff to ask our fire chief to look at these specific properties brought up in the memo and to deliver a report to us as soon as he can?
That'd be the ideal thing to do.
First, the question I have is from Murray, the last time you did that survey, is that survey still valid, the one that looked at all the areas?
It was last year. It just produced, you know, the state-of-the-art wildfire, the best one in Siskiyou County.
So I'm just saying-
And Jereia was definitely involved in that.
The Jereia Forest Service, Cal Fire-
Everybody.
All the agency representatives.
All the agencies were involved in that, and we had the best plan, Murray, the state-of-the-art plan for Siskiyou County.
Well, the other thing I'm wondering here is just that we could look on that plan and note to the petitioners-
Yes.
Look their relative dangerousness compared to the rest of the area. I think that's also part of the-
I think when Mr. Jereia comes and presents on the issue, it's a great opportunity for him to use that, to make the community aware that that exists and for us to publicize it as well. Okay, so I ask if there are any objections to that motion today? Mark? Understood?
Understood.
Okay, thank you. If there are any other motions or anything on this, then we'll move on to item sixteen-four or formerly item sixteen-B, the contract engineering services with wastewater treatment system. Thank you. Mr. Grant again.
Okay, what we have here is the city has received a notice of violation for a, its wastewater treatment plant's effort discharge, where we had a sequence in a coliform sample. And as a result, there was a paying associated of twelve thousand dollars to the city, and staff worked with pitiful engineering and ended up devising a plan of what could be done, try to mitigate the issue of coliform occurrence in this point. And one of the ways that we thought was the best at this point was to increase its chlorine capacity. Programming of the flow to both of them. We have to be able to have the chlorine capacity on site to be able to go up with the increased flows. So to do that, we would have to expand the chlorine facilities at the site to accommodate additional cylinders and also finish some automation as well. So we had a phone call conversation with the State Regional Control Board, explained to them what we're looking at doing to see if we were to do this project, if we could do that in lieu of paying them a fine. So essentially, take the twelve thousand dollars instead of paying it to the state, we would take the twelve thousand dollars and put it towards the project. So there's engineering costs and there's also hardware costs and some contractor costs to do the electrical and control as well. So there's, what I'm looking at here is to do a budget amendment, which there's a form attached to thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars, for which twelve thousand dollars would be, you know, not having to go to the state. And that would pay for the engineering, the equipment costs, and for some contract costs for wastewater, you know, to do this work. Most of the work is going to be done in-house, where staff is going to actually order the equipment, the scales, the chlorine stations, shut-off valves, and it has to do with some composite samples and stuff that would have to be put in as well to improve how we sample for the sink. So a lot of that's going to be done in-house. So it's really, it's cheap as we can get it done. But that is the estimate cost. I was told the cost is probably about thirty-two to thirty-five thousand dollars in the materials and the contract costs, plus the cost of pitiful engineering. So I just went with the higher cost because staff generally a little longer asking this stuff. But what I'm asking is a budget amendment of the sewer improvement fund of thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars to do this work.
Thank you, Mark. Question?
Is this something that would normally come out of the sewer improvement fund anyway? In other words, it's, this is the kind of thing the sewer improvement fund is there for?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. This is improvement to the-
Right. That's all.
Do you have questions, Murray?
No, now Murray explained this to me on the phone, obviously, so I'm a little bit tired of preparing on this.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions from the council?
No, sorry.
All right, public comment on this?
None.
Did you say camera comment on this? All right, close the podium for comment then, and back to the council.
I make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract based on engineering design and manage wastewater treatment facility, coordination, system improvement project at Casa, four thousand, two hundred, and to authorize a budget amendment of thirty-five thousand to the purchase of the-
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine?
It says thirty-nine thousand.
He's looking at the spot.
No, I said thirty-five. Okay, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred to complete, to complete the chlorine compliance project.
Could you do it with like a little bit more gusto or?
You don't really care, huh?
Yeah, okay, you know what? It was good, it was well done.
I second that.
All right. Uh, do you have any other comments then?
You did say thirty-nine thousand, two hundred, right?
I said thirty-nine thousand, two hundred.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have a roll call for it on this.
Councilor Shanda?
Yes.
Councilor Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilor Price?
Aye.
Councilor Sprowl?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
We found a way to see that one, please.
Moving on. Thank you, Mark, for that.
Okay, the last item, all right, the last item is okay? This is item four-one-sixteen-B, approval of Caltrans exchange agreement.
Which I don't even understand.
Okay, for this one here, again, sorry for my having staff report, but what this is is actually a good thing. This, this goes back to the last conversation where I reported that the city did receive money for the RSTP for doing the sidewalks, we're looking at in front of City Hall and hopefully out in front of US Bank. It's kind of a dual support, we're, we're looking for replacing sidewalks that are in need and also, you know, the trees that have caused the problems in this area. And they're looking for a good place for bus stop, so it's a really good project that they're presenting. And as part of that, they did, they give forceful funds, a majority of the funds, to let that project pay out. But we have, it's probably about fifty-five thousand dollars that we'll be able to utilize for our project here. So we're going to be able to get a lot done with that. But as part of that project, there's funds, there's an agreement here that you can see that they're asking that the city support the exchange agreement. And basically, there's money that comes from the federal government out, I think it was twenty-ten, that the federal, or twenty-twelve, federal government passed for a bill that allowed people to go out for this type of activity, including staking. And that is brought to the state and from the state, Caltrans. So through these exchanges, they want to make sure that the city is understanding of how the money is brought in, and that we're going to be competitive with the project, and we're going to have dedicated accounts to track the funds and be open to audit and such and such, just like we do with any other type of Caltrans fund. So this exchange agreement is basically saying that we agree that the money is going from the feds to the state to the local, we're all here with that.
But you don't have anything now. Is this a resolution or motion?
There is a, there is a, it's an agreement here, the Siskiyou Counter local transportation Commission, the Local Surface Transportation Program, Statement of Compliance with Exchange Agreement. So it's a one-page-
Yeah, it's right here, it's on the other side.
Yes, double-sided. So it's a one-page, and behind, behind that is the agreement that the government signed it in place that were, that the council also voted on with saying, yes, we agree with the, this will be sixteen-seventeen, RSTP signed agreement.
Thank you, Mark. There's not any questions or public comment? Who can you put in? Wait, Callie, do you have something?
So you're talking about money's being spent on the sidewalk up here by City Hall and the bank?
Yes.
What about the rest of the street?
All in due time. The City Council did appropriate about twenty-two thousand dollars this year, this fiscal year for sidewalks. So we're working on, some of that money, we're looking at dealing with areas that this money will not cover in front of this area, specifically dealing with the trees out front right around here.
So this one is for trees and sidewalks?
This is specifically for sidewalk areas where the bus shelters, where we have a bus shelter proposed in front of City Hall, actually in the north parking lot, and in a, what they call a semi-seat, we're looking at in front of the US Bank. Right now, the bus stop is located just south of the Burger Barn, and there's a bus stop that's just south of City Hall. It's kind of an odd place, not very safe, not a good site this exists. So we're looking at getting more central to the civic area downtown, and we're also looking at having improved crosswalks and the, we're really looking at improving the-
So it sounds like to me, if you live up this way towards City Hall and the busier part of town, it's going to be taken care of first before some of the north are going to be fixed.
Yes. But there is a bus shelter that's going in front of Children's Park, possibly this month, maybe next week, and there's a cat spirit in there.
Yeah.
And we are in talks with the LTC, Alkine, other bus stops taking care of as well. As far as up north, there's, they're looking at the bus stop over there just north of the ax, over by the train there, and, or over there by the football field. They're trying to figure out what-
That's still, that's too far and that's not far enough. I'm in between.
Well, there is another section over there by the Dunsborough A and Suits that they're looking at, possible on there. So they're, they're looking at them all throughout the city and outside the city, but we have to provide that.
So the sidewalks are going to be taken care of first, and that would involve the bus stop?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll close the podium for public comment then. Back to the council, is there a motion?
You want me to read it, or are you tired of reading?
I can't find it.
I need to go say something more.
So make a motion to accept the Siskiyou County Local Transportation Commission's Statement of Compliance with Exchange Agreement pursuant to the Regional Surface Transportation Program, Section one-eighty-two-point-six, B-one program. The under sign claim and hereby acknowledges that he or she has received a copy of the exchange agreement dated May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen between SCLTC and the State Department of Transportation programs. An A agency agrees to comply with the applicable required conditions contained there.
That works for me?
Works for me.
I'll second that. Okay, thank you, Josh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, that was unanimous. Are there any other items to go on in future?
Yeah, I'd like to have on the future agenda an update where we stand with the replacement for Ms. Julie. We've got a hundred and twenty days and counting. And you're not going to be able to tell me nothing about it for another fourteen, so that's supposed to be down to a hundred and six? Getting scared.
I'm actually, I'm looking at, it seems like I have meeting with Julie and Pam tomorrow. So we, Julie and I have been talking about this for, for months now. And, you know, if I want honor, it's completely her choice as to when she's going to retire. She hasn't given a day that she's looking at, but it's totally up to her. And I am letting her have her choice, so she can stay as long as she wants. But it is a conversation we can have so that we can get somebody here to sign for-
Training, right.
And-
So there's some big shoes to fill.
I'm sure that Mark will bring it to the council's attention once, if we need to do anything, once a recruitment happens.
Okay, well, I just-
That's what we're saying for-
Put it in the, in the light.
So you're going to keep us informed as to whether you want the ten points?
Yes, please. Any other items for a future agenda at this time?
And what is, I'm sorry, I'm not quite clear. Are you guys feeling something from the reverends?
No.
We're supporting-
I'm going to put the flags out.
I think in Edna-
The road, you can put the flags out through town, but that's about the limit.
Again, so we have a pretty full agenda for the next meeting. And I, I need to start working on the staff reports tomorrow, Monday, but I'm looking at Thursday, Friday, the holiday. So that'd be, it'll be a couple days to really put together the agenda.
What holiday is that ever in the state?
Never.
Oh.
So we do have the CPG application, that's going to come as a punditary, that will come to the next council meeting. And there's a bunch of other things that I can add.
So you have a full agenda and everything?
I did.
Thank you.
I make a motion that-
Callie, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just need to make a comment. I'm on the, the Christmas event committee, and we've already had two meetings. So we're getting a handle on it early this year. This whole...
What Christmas event?
We're handling the weekend. What is this, our third or fourth year?
Okay.
Skittles are game?
I think it's the fourth.
You go down in the...
Cool.
Okay, the motion, are we adjourned?
All right. Were adjourned. Any objections?